Call to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for August 27, 2013. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among the united countries.
Approval of the regular meeting agenda. Is there any changes that need to come? John?
None that I know of.
Chairman?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify or say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So this time, we will ask for public input. Mr. Staley, please state your name when you get to the podium. And you have to talk loud.
Good. Okay, can you hear me at all? My voice does not project well. My name is Gary Staley. I'm a citizen of Grant County. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Hull and Commissioner Ramos. I know I'm not telling you anything new when I state that our Hila Regional Medical Center, our community-owned hospital is perhaps the single most valuable asset that the county owns. Some might argue that its residents are the most valuable. Yes, its residents are of paramount importance. However, the county doesn't own its residents. In fact, the residents actually own the county. And that means that the residents own all the county's assets, including our wonderful hospital. And through the marvelous representative process we call democracy, the residents of Grant County have elected each of you, and you three gentlemen have taken an oath to do your absolute best to represent our interests and to safeguard these valuable assets. And specifically today, I talk about the crown jewel of our community, Hila Regional Medical Center. I think we can all agree that a hospital is critical to our future as a vibrant community. Without it, we will likely shrivel up and die. Without a full-service medical center, it'll be difficult to recruit new business. Surveys clearly reveal that the top priority people evaluate when they consider relocating anywhere is access to quality medical care. It's also a critical determinant as to why people decide to stay in a location. And so we must all hope that our hospital succeeds. It must remain financially solvent so that all residents continue to receive quality medical services without being required to travel elsewhere. Having to travel to receive medical help when you're ill is no fun at all. I personally witnessed the incredible hardship of family members, of my own family, having to travel to Las Cruces for cancer treatment, and then the huge relief of having it available right here in our own community. I thank all the current and previous players who have worked so hard to make that and other services available here in our own town. I commend and thank the commission for inviting Hila Regional Medical Center's Board of Trustees Chairman Charles Kelly and its new six-month interim CEO, Brian Cunningham, to our county commission meeting to give a report on our community hospital. We, as citizens, have entrusted you, as county commissioners, to carefully consider and appoint the Board of Trustees to make sure our crown jewel, Hila Regional Medical Center, is safeguarded. One of the very valuable reasons for encouraging their report at this meeting is that this meeting has the added benefit of being televised to much of our community through the community access television. Many residents have the opportunity of hearing the same report that you hear. Making this vital information available to the entire public will only enhance, assure, and assure our transparency and educate our citizens. They can then be engaged in the process. And so I asked the commission to include a Hila Regional Medical Center report as a standing agenda item for all of its future regular commission meetings. In fact, as I was preparing this statement, I decided that I was going to encourage the Board of Trustees of the Hila Regional to invite Katz to be at all of their future board meetings. If that's not happening now, if it is, I commend you; if not, I encourage it. There's been a lot of changes at our hospital since our last meeting. There'll likely be more changes. An entirely new management team is being put in place. One minute? Okay. I think it would be very foolish of those who may have disagreed with these decisions of the board and of the commission to hope that it fails. That would be about as foolish as saying to the fellow out in the boat, "I hope you sink," when in fact, we're all on the same boat. And we must do everything we can to ensure its success. I am certainly not embarrassed, nor am I concerned with political correctness, to state that I pray for the success of our hospital. I will also work for our success. I will encourage all of us to become informed and involved in making sure the hospital remains alive and well. So Commissioners, please include the report of our Hila Regional Medical Center on all future meetings. Thank you.
Any further public input? Please state your name for the record, ma'am.
My name is Janie Katz, and my partner and I have been Grant County landowners and residents for the last thirteen years. I've been a New Mexico resident for almost thirty. Yesterday, I went again to the county clerk's office and asked for a marriage license. I went the first time on Thursday. Robert and his staff were awesome. They were very friendly. They were wonderful to me. And they stated that they had no problem issuing me a license, that they were just waiting for the word to be given to them that it was okay. Yesterday, in Bernalillo County, a state judge said it was unconstitutional to deny people a marriage license or anything else in the state of New Mexico on the basis of sexual orientation. I guess I want you guys to be a hero. I'm asking you to step up and to do whatever it takes to make Robert comfortable in doing this. He says he needs to get it from somewhere else. He needs to get the okay from somewhere else. I think it would be great if Grant County didn't have to wait for a court to tell them to do something that the commission, if you don't have the power to do that, then you went to the courts and asked them to do that for you. I think that Grant County and Silver City are a very seamless and welcoming community. It has never been an issue. It's a non-issue here, being gay, and I love that. I'm asking you to make it a non-issue for us to all get married here as well. Thank you very much.
Is there any further public? You gotta speak loud, Francis.
I know. Can you hear me? I'm short, I cannot.
Now, if you break it, I don't think we're losing much.
Can you hear me? Okay. I wanted to commend the Grant County Clerk's Office for the awesome work they did in the special election. I know that they got a whole lot of people that did send in their, all their ballots and stuff, and I think that they got the, you know, the amount of all the election results out in a very timely manner, and I thank them for that. And I also want to commend Brett Caston, Commissioner Caston, chairman, and also our county manager, John Sari, for being, for actually going in the community and talking about the, you know, about the upcoming special election, you know, what the pros and cons were, for also participating in a board that offered both sides, and for being in the community and participating in it, whether people agreed or didn't agree. The fact is that I think it was great that you guys were part of that, working with other entities, and seeing in the public and being able to, you know, answer questions and stuff. So I want to thank you guys in the Grant County Clerk's Office for doing that for our community. Thank you.
Anybody else with public input today?
No, I'm just gonna back up. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sarah Sales. I am the interim agriculture and 4-H agent here in the Extension Service. We haven't been to see you since May. As you probably well know, summer is 4-H season. We've been busy. But I wanted to stop in and give a very brief report. I know I don't have a lot of time, but just let you know what all has been going on this summer. We had quite a few kids involved in contests, of course, and that's our big push in the summer, when school ends, all youth organizations hit it really hard and have a lot going on. But at our May county council meeting, which is the youth county organization that meets and has officers, we talked to the kids about a couple of problems that we saw, we'll put in quotations, "problems" or "issues" that we're having in 4-H. One being, the kids already involved were focusing very narrowly and not taking advantage of all there was for the 4-H kids to do. And the second thing, we haven't been doing a good job, and I don't mean that as any kind of criticism, it's been a very difficult thing to do a good job, to get out and recruit kids outside of the traditional lines that come into the 4-H program when there's only one person in the office doing the work. So we said it before, these kids, what did they think we could do? And they came up with a great idea. We had a very successful event in July that the kids and every staff member in our office worked very hard on. We had thirty-six kids come to it. About two-thirds of them were 4-Hers already in the program, but the other third were kids who were not related to 4-H at all. Now, we spent a lot of time to reach ten or twelve new kids, but it's a very good first step, and it's neat that our kids that are already involved are so interested in bringing in some kids who might not have the same connection to 4-H that they have through, you know, parents who did it and grandparents who did it, and people in the community who are already involved in it. This weekend, the only other thing I wanted to let you guys know about, we had a really, really neat event that came from New Mexico State University. The Board of Regents Chairman, Mike Cheney, and President Gary Cruthers came to Grant County on a tour of southern New Mexico called Ride for the 4-H Clover. Now, President Cruthers wasn't on a motorcycle, but about ninety other people were, and we had nearly a hundred folks all together from all over the state, who, some of them were in support vehicles. Those who didn't ride were in support vehicles. But they came to our office, and they met our 4-H kids, and they saw what our program was doing, and so we were very fortunate to get to be a part of that. Again, some of them were connected to the university, and they just wanted to see what was going on out in the state. But a good portion, I would say more than half, were people with no connection to 4-H who came to find out what it was and to see what we were doing, and so it was a great way to get some publicity, not just for 4-H in the state, but for Grant County as well, and we're really proud we got to be a part of that. So there's a lot more that's been happening. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I just wanted to let you know that we are working really hard to keep extension relevant in the community. Now we get into fair season, and then we'll be able to be doing some other things as well.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Anytime the Extension Service, Sarah? Anytime the Extension Service wants to give a report, you can give it under county reports. You don't have to give it under public comments, so.
I didn't know.
Yeah, you're part of the county, too.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other public comments today?
Good morning. My name is Carol Morrison, and I'm a citizen of Grant County. And I'm also a member of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Silver City, and our first principle is the inherent worth and dignity of every individual. And I would like to stand in support of Janie Katz and Suzie Calhoun and their request to you for equal rights and to let you know that I stand on the side of equal rights for everyone, and also I stand on the side of love, and I hope you'll do the same.
Anybody else with public input today? Seeing none, we'll move on. Move into minutes. Approve or disapprove the minutes from July 16, 2013, work session minutes, July 18, 2013, regular meeting minutes, and the August 26, 2013, 22nd, August 22, 2013, special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve all A, B, and C on minutes.
Second? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 16, July 18, and August 22. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify or say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. John, you want to go through the expenditure report and give us the highlights?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your package, you have the expenditure report dated August 26, 2013. The amount is $2,616,391.96. It has several payrolls in it, is why a tie, because it's been a while since we had the meeting. At the special meeting, we did not do the expenditure report. Some of the major expenditures are, we have $225,345 for our workers' compensation, insurance The Sapien Creek Volunteer Fire Department purchased a piece of equipment, which is We have the county indigent fund. We made a payment of $73,468.50. Those are the funds that we're paying to outside contractors, not up to the state for that sole community provider piece, but that would be the heart hospital in different places. We've had to ship people from Grant County out to county residents. And then, under our construction for the fairground building, we had an expenditure of $166,280.68 for that fair building construction, which is moving along. The electricians have been out there this week installing the electrical inside. The building is up. The roof is on. The skirting's all on. The downspouts and gutters are on. They really just have to put the lights in the building as soon as the electrician gets done with the lighting in the building. The contractors told us that he will allow us to go in and start spreading the sand and setting up the pins for the animals inside the building. So right now, Mr. Gutierrez has been out there almost every day on his way home from work or to work, checking on the project, and it looks like we shouldn't have any issues. I knock on wood, because it seems like every time we say that, something goes wrong, but it looks like we shouldn't have any issues meeting the deadlines for the fair to have the animals in that new fair barn for this year's fair.
That's good news. Anything else on the expenditure report?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 26, 2013, expenditure report.
There's a motion and a second to approve the August 26, 2013, expenditure report. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify or say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, new business. Approve or disapprove the proclamation declaring September 13 and 14, 2013, as Walk for Heroes Appreciation Day? I know Randy has a new job, and I really appreciate him showing up, and I was wondering, Randy, would you mind reading this proclamation for us one more time before you completely take your new duties? Double duty?
Sir, this is a proclamation entitled James H. Purtle Walk for the Heroes. Whereas the Walk for the Heroes on September 13, 2013, is an undertaking to honor the losses we have suffered after 9/11, and whereas the walk commemorates Americans who died for our country following the 9/11 tragedy, including civilians, first responders, firefighters, policemen, and armed forces. And whereas the walk also commemorates the Gold Star Moms and families who lost loved ones and struggle every day after the attack on the Twin Towers. And whereas the Walk for the Heroes is approximately 36.5 miles long and stretches between Hurley and Demme, New Mexico, volunteers, monetary donations, contributions will help out with completing the journey. And whereas some of the proceeds from the walk will be used to establish the James H. Purtle Scholarship Fund, benefit the Southwest New Mexico Transition Center for Homeless Veterans, and Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Program. And whereas the Walk for the Heroes, the walkers, runners, will start the Gateway Motel in Hurley, New Mexico, beginning at 11:00 PM on September 13, and expected to reach DS Farms in Demme, New Mexico around 2:00 PM on September 14. And whereas other corresponding events are planned, such as a bike run, a run-walk marathon, and a caravan of walkers for the final five miles. The bike run will depart at 1:30 PM on September 14 from the Gateway Motel in Hurley. And whereas the Walk for the Heroes is a great public outreach undertaking for local Marines, Navy, Army, Air Force, and their families. Now therefore, be resolved by the Grant County Commissioners that September 13 and 14, 2013, be declared Walk for the Heroes Appreciation Days during this 27th day of August, 2013, in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Thank you very much, Randy. I assume that you have something to say.
I would just like to introduce our commander from the Marine Corps League, Larry Hines, our senior vice commander, Mark McDonald, junior vice commander, Rob Narvaez, adjutant, Frank Donahue, judge advocate, web sergeant, Kristen P. Malceras, chaplain Shane Gabbert. And I would like to let our commander say a few words about this event that's going to be happening on the 13th and the 14th of September.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Again, Larry Hines, Marine Corps League, GAF Newell, MDH, 1328. I'm here, first of all, to express my appreciation to the county commissioner for that tremendous proclamation honoring a truly remarkable man. On what we can say about Michael Lopez, he was diagnosed that he would never walk again. He would be bedridden for the rest of his life. He said, "No, I won't." They told him he would be in a wheelchair for the rest of his life. He said, "No, I won't." They said, "You will never walk without a walker for the rest of your life." He said, "No, I won't." Right now, he can't be with us. He's out on the member's building a house. So again, don't tell Michael he can't do something because he darn sure will. My appreciation to him and to his wife, Liz, without her help, he probably couldn't have achieved what he's achieved. Again, an incredibly remarkable man. His proclamation just begins to do him justice. The Walk for Heroes not only honors Michael, it honors our Gold Star Mothers, of which in Grant County, we have three, Mrs. Hall and Cynthia in Santa Clara, Mary Cowan here in Silver City, and Kay Beaman, who's dressed here.
Right there.
Yes, this is right here. You'll notice she's also wearing red over black. It's our standard Marine Corps League uniform. Can think of very little to say other than thank you for your support. Support this by walking. If you don't feel you can walk 37 miles, see us. We will see to it that there are shorter distances, but please be part of it. It is a fundraiser. Please contribute. The Marine Corps League thanks the county and offers our entire complete support for it. Thank you for this opportunity.
No, we need to thank you.
We thank you. Thank you, sir.
Ron probably can do it.
I'm gonna make a special effort on doing it on a set of blades, 36.5 miles, so I'll be lagging behind.
It's just you challenging.
Five hours if possible.
So is it really leave at 11 o'clock at night?
11:00 PM. That is correct.
That's bedtime, guys.
Bedtime's nine o'clock.
It is cooler, isn't it? Okay, I'd stand for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation declaring September 13 and 14, 2013, as a Walk for Heroes Appreciation Days.
Second, then? There's a motion and a proper second proclaiming September 13 and 14, 2013, as Walk for Heroes Appreciation Day. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify or say an aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And we would like to give you a copy of this proclamation real quick, if you don't mind.
Take a picture.
We'll wear it with pride. Okay. Next on the agenda is Mr. Charles Kelly and Mr. Brian Cunningham. They're gonna give us an update on the Hila Regional Medical Center. Welcome, gentlemen. You can come up together, one at a time, or whatever you want to do.
Good morning. I'm Charles Kelly, as most everybody knows, and I am a citizen of Baird and presently, recently elected chairman of the Board of Trustees, Hila Regional Medical Center. And I just would like to introduce everyone in the room to interim CEO, Brian Cunningham, who's been working very hard here for a little bit less than a month. Our Board of Trustees meeting for this month is this Friday at 12:00 noon. Everyone in this room, anyone in Grant County that would like to come, is certainly invited. I appreciate the statement from Gary Staley, and I agree with most everything he's saying. And so I hope that we see him there at the meetings also. But on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I would like to say that we haven't met since all these changes started in management. So we'll have a lot more to tell you next time we come, but we did want to come today and kind of summarize. Brian will let you know what's transpired in the last three weeks or so, and we're hopeful. Tension has dropped in the hospital abundantly. We are optimistic for the future, and we love and need our hospital as much as everyone else, and we, that's why we volunteer to do what we do. I would stand for any questions, and if none, I would certainly like to introduce Brian Cunningham at this time.
Any questions? Can we just listen to Brian first and then give him the question?
Let him know if the public starts to come up participation, which hopefully it does to those meetings, because the public usually doesn't attend the hospital board meetings, you're more than welcome to use this room if it becomes too large for the boardroom that you have over there. Because I know it's not very large. Once you get all your staff in it, there's not a lot of room for public, so you're more than welcome to use this room.
We'll certainly take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Before Mr. Katz, I'd like to thank you for stepping up and leading the charge on the board. I know it's a tough job, but y'all have done a really good job this last few months in the predicaments that we're in, so we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much. I wanted to say thanks to everyone in the room and thank you to our community. I appreciate so much our Commissioners' active involvement in the success of this community and most certainly in Hila Regional's success, and I just appreciate everybody's awareness and perspective of how important the hospital is to this community and each and every one of us here. I want to thank Charles Kelly, our board chair, and the rest of the board members for their vision and confidence in the internal and local talent that we have here at Hila Regional and in Grant County. Regional and in Grand County and the surrounding counties. Truly is, as you guys know, you won't be surprised to know what talent, commitment we have, the number of intelligent, creative, caring people. You're not surprised, and neither is our board, and of course neither am I. They've, because of their vision and courage, they've given me the opportunity as an 11-year caregiver at Hiller Regional, the opportunity to help this organization move forward to serve in the interim CEO capacity at this time. And again, I can't thank them enough. I really appreciate community members like Mr. Staley and many others that have come forward and shared their perspective with me, how important the hospital is to their community, and pledged their support. We know that people have perspectives and concerns about the success of the hospital, and yet besides, you know, all that considered, they're still willing to support and offer their services and offer their perspective, and I can't thank them enough. It truly takes a community and our local officials to make this thing work and perform at its best, and that's what we're all committed to. So thank you so much. I want to just give a very brief update. In future commission meetings, I'll give you more details, and those details will follow what we discuss in the board meetings and what we finalize in the board meetings. My first board meeting as the interim CEO is this Friday, so I won't share a whole lot of detail because it hasn't been finalized with the board. Subsequent meetings, I'll share with you all that finalized detail. But I want to make sure that you guys know that per our commitment, per our directive from the board, we've been really busy. A lot of people have been really busy in the last three weeks. As you guys know, we had four of our senior leaders resign, and typically that would be catastrophic to an organization, but in Grand County at Hiller Regional, it is not a catastrophe. It truly is an opportunity for many others in our organization in this surrounding area that have been working very hard for many, many years to serve at this next level of leadership. So instead of a nine-month turnaround, as is the case many times in these situations, and many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars in recruiting fees and premium wages, I want you to know that the last position we're interviewing for at our chief level, we're finishing this week. We're presently interviewing our chief nursing officer. We had initially seven internal candidates. A few dropped out for various reasons, but multiple internal and local care candidates for all these positions. So by the end of this week, and maybe Monday or Tuesday of next week probably, we will have replaced all of the resigned positions with internal and local caregivers. Some of the people that are in this candidate pool have as many as 40 years' experience in healthcare, 40, 30, 20 years' experience, some a little bit newer. But I just want to let you know the tremendous talent we have available and that we are involving in this new leadership process. So you'll get the full report of the specifics as we come out the other side of our board meeting on Friday. I want to also let you know that the other area of concern was these 70 caregivers that were impacted back in May. The actual number is actually 67, but I was directed by our Board of Trustees to address that issue, and I want you to know that we've had meetings. In the first two weeks, we completed that task. I, along with our CFO and our Director of Human Resources, met with all of the departments that were still impacted by that situation. We met in a transparent, involved way involving the decision-makers of the department. We had dialogue about our staffing levels based on current demand, current workload, current patient volumes. That's the method that you can determine the most appropriate level and mix of your staff. So we've done that inclusively and transparently, and we finished that, as I said last week. I'll be bringing that to the board this Friday for finalization and then, of course, informing you all. Moving forward, if we're going to deliver a service, it has to be with the amount of staff needed for it to be high-quality care. So there won't be an across-the-board approach in these kind of situations. Each dialogue has to happen strategically with the service line experts. I want you to know that that occurred in these last couple weeks. And just last to finish up, just on our patient care side, I want to just let you know that we did have our grand opening for our cardiology services. Hiller Cardiology Services' grand opening was last week, so Dr. Ratliff is right across the street from the hospital in that medical office area. Just an incredible, non-invasive cardiologist. He's already incredibly busy. There's such a need in our community, and we're filling that need. And just one last physician update, Dr. Windler, one of our well-known surgeons, been here for a long time, is coming back to us, and he will start the 1st of September and be taking some of the load off of our two surgeons that we have, our two general surgeons. And I stand for questions.
Well, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done, and we definitely want you to continue to work with keeping our employees the best we can. And of course, got to meet the needs of the hospital and our patients. And I just want to thank you again for all your hard work. It's been a long, three months, I believe, four months, and I think things are looking up, and we have some hope for our hospital, and we appreciate it.
I'd just like to say thank you for your transparency and refreshment. Refreshment continue here. At a regular meeting whenever we're not in a crisis, whenever we're doing business, and that's good. And I want to thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your presence and your support and literally all the hell that you went through the last few months, you and your board. I want to thank you very much, and we look forward to meeting with you on a monthly basis. So thank you very much.
I do think that we probably should meet on a monthly basis. I don't see any reason for you to be here twice a month. You don't have any new information here. And we can sit down and kind of decide when's best for you, when you'll have the most information that's fresh, and we can get those dates set up in the future. Thank you very much. The one thing I do want to say is every time I talk to somebody that works at the hospital, I ask them, "Is it going better?" And not one time has somebody told me no. So I appreciate that. Things are getting better up there, and I appreciate that. And you and I had that conversation that it's about people first, and I appreciate you doing that. Charles, great job. Appreciate you doing, taking it on. And with that, I'm done. If anybody else has anything, or if you have anything else to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sandoval? Do you want to give a short report on that, Anthony? I think Abby has some stuff to add to it also.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I think that maybe the reason Lonnie's not here today and I can't speak for him because he didn't contact me, but I think he has to be on the agenda prior to us meeting last week. We wanted, Dory went through all the signatures that we currently have for the dedication, and I think you guys have a color-coded copy of the map that she made to make it a little bit more simplified. The yellow ones are the ones that we don't have signature on, and it's pretty clear that without those signatures, we can't do the dedication. I also provided him with the ordinance that governs dedication and showed him the language where we needed all of the residents that are adjacent to the roadways. So I think with that, I think that he was satisfied. I hope he was. If not, hopefully he'll see this on TV, and he'll come back, and we can try and answer his questions, so.
Okay. Abby, did you want to add to that?
I know there were some signatures, Abby. Can you kind of explain that? Because even I was kind of confused.
I think Anthony talked about it a little bit. Is this on? Anthony, you're talking about the dedication ordinance for the subdivisions. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. The subdivision regulations provide us with the ordinance for the formal dedication of the roadways. And in that, I think that's actually the last paragraph for the dedication is the language where it says you have to have all landowners. It doesn't say 100%, but the language does say all, so that's where we take it in that every one of the landowners that are, it says adjacent or abut the roadway, so. And I pointed out to him, showed him the language, and I don't think he was really aware of that until I pointed it out to him on that day.
And I think probably a little confusion is because this situation is a little bit different than our average subdivision, because the subdivision's already done, and we never had the dedication. So, does that make sense, Anthony? We're doing this a little out of order than we normally do, so our ordinance, you know, he may not have understood. We do follow that, but it doesn't say when. I don't know if it has a situation where, like this one, but I did, we also found, or I found the statutes too that talk about having all signatures or all landowners need to be set forth on the plat and all that.
There's a big confusion about the 66 and 2/3% for maintenance and/or for the assessment district and the 100% that you need for the dedication. But that's where the confusion always is, and it's not uncommon.
To have 100% for the dedication, because I can't give away somebody else's land. So I understand it completely. Yes, sir.
And I just want to point out, because we're doing two of these right now, and it appears the other one's moving faster than this one when people look at them both from the two different subdivisions, is because in the other subdivision, the roads were already dedicated as public right-of-ways. And so we don't have to go through this step that we're having to go through with Loma Verde. We were able to start the process and take their petition and go forward with that, which that one's at. New Mexico Finance Authority has just sent me back the numbers, looking at the loan, what it would cost for the loan, and so we've got that, and we should have a public hearing in the last meeting in September for the Commissioners to take a look at that, and then we'll proceed forward. We're going to try and do a resolution to back-fund ourselves so these residents don't have to wait.
Thanks for explaining that, because the rumor that I heard the other day was that the one that's in my district is moving faster. It's because I'm pushing.
If the Loma Verde had already had dedicated public right-of-ways and the road within that right-of-way, then the process would be going along as quickly as the other one, or at the same pace as the other one. It would be at New Mexico Finance Authority as well, but we're stuck with trying to get the public dedication first.
Doesn't look like you have many, so I guess we just need to get really diligent and see if we can't get those signatures.
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to point out too is that typically this is the work of the residents of the community, but the county, through the Commissioner's direction, we've stepped up and done a lot of the work for these subdivisions, these residents in these areas. And so typically, it's their responsibility to do all this work and bring it to us once it's complete, but we've gone ahead and put a lot of time into it with staff to get this process going forward. So we are working diligently to try and get it done as well, and Dory's making phone calls to try and find if she can get those last few. And we're trying to get them done as well. We want to send out letters, and we're trying to get it done as much as they are. We want these things done and then go forward.
Put out an APB on them, Sheriff.
Got to go to California for one, though.
Extra diem. Okay, moving on. Approve or disapprove application for fire protection grant funds for fiscal year 2014 for the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department? Can go through that, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Each year, the fire departments they can put in, for the fire protection funds, there's a grant program up there. The Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department has put in several times and been successful in getting money through this grant program. They've been able to buy equipment as well as trucks for their department. This year, their application is for $55,466. It's to order six sets of bunker gear, six sets of wildland protective equipment, six handheld radios with batteries and chargers, and upgrade the Class A to an ROW CAF system, which is the compressed air foam system that they're putting on all their vehicles now. And so that's what their grant would be for, is the $55,466. Like I said, in the past, they've been very successful competing against the others. They will have to match 20% of that, which is $11,094, which that match will come out of their fire protection funds or their fire excise tax. It does not come from the general fund, and they have money for that.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for fire protection grant fund for the fiscal year 2014 for Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department.
A second. There's a motion and a proper second to approve the application for fire protection grant funds. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, stick a five, say a no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove amendment to Article 5, Section 2 of the Food Policy Council bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In the past, we've approved a bylaw change, the Food Policy Council, as you know, is a council set up by the Commission to look at the needs in the community. What they wish to change is currently, the language in their bylaws says the council shall consist of nine members. An effort shall be made to make sure members represent a cross-section intra-party, including local government. The proposed change is they would like it to say that it shall consist of a minimum of nine members and not more than 13. They've actually got a higher, got a lot of people wanting to be on the board and serve, and so they feel that they could get a better reference of the community if they were able to expand to 13 if they needed to, but at a minimum be nine. And so that's the change. It'll still represent a cross-section, including local government. They just wish to be able to have more members and fluctuate between that nine and 13.
Mr. Chairman, what kind of relationship does the Health Council and the Food Policy Council have? Are they working together on this?
They work together. Anthony, they're not, I guess they're not a part of it. There's some members, they talk.
Is there any duplication?
He's a member of the Food Policy Council. He attends the meetings on behalf of Grand County.
But is there duplication here, Anthony, or?
No. Commissioner, I think that the only members that they do have belong to healthy kids, healthy communities, and although they're under the Health Council, I think that are a grant-funded program.
Oh, okay.
Actually, a grant-funded program, and they're the only, I would say, the only link between the two, but as far as duplication of efforts, I don't see that at all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve amendment Article 5, Section 2 of the Food Policy Council bylaws.
Second. There's a motion and a proper second to amend the Article 5, Section 2. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, stick a five, say a no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration for Phase 3 of the public apron reconstruction at the Grand County Airport?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you know, each year, we get funding through the FAA to do repairs to our airport because it is a Part 139 compliant airport. This year, we're trying to do the Phase 3 of our apron reconstruction, which the apron is the portion that's in front of the hangars, in front of the terminal. We're just trying to rebuild that, stay ahead of it, as it ages, that asphalt ages there. This agreement, this grant application is for a total of $462,146, which of that, the federal share will be 95%, which is $439,038. The state of New Mexico will participate at $11,554, and Grand County will participate at $11,554. We do these projects, like I said, we're slated about $400,000 to $500,000 each year to do projects at our airport, and it works out really good, especially since we get almost a $500,000 project for $11,000 to the taxpayers of the state of New Mexico with their state taxes. I know they pay federal taxes, which that's where the other portion, but out of our general fund, it's only $11,000 that comes out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration for Phase 3 of the public apron reconstruction of the Grand County Airport.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the grant application to the FAA for Phase 3 of the public apron reconstruction. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, stick a five, say a no. Motion passes. Contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove agreement number A1320, sub-grant agreement with the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management in the amount of $42,913.72.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a grant we do each year with Homeland Security. What they will do is, because we have an emergency manager, they'll pay half of the salary of that individual in expenses. And so what this does is that the federal award is $21,456.86, and the county's match is $21,456.86. And so we get paid back half of our emergency manager's salary and expenses, and because he's not a full-time emergency manager, they've cut it back, so his true salary and expenses is not only $42,000. dollars, but they cut it back based on the amount of time he does, and then they fund us half of that. So, it helps offset some of the costs of having the emergency manager here for the residents.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agreement number A-13-20.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve agreement number A-1320. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove agreements with the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging. That is a handle.
For services to the Grand County Senior Programs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. These are the agreements that we get each year to operate the senior program. So, the first one is a direct purchase of services agreement. That's four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And that's the agreement that we provide. The congregate meals, which are the meals that are served at the facilities, the home-delivered meals, the homemaker housekeeping, the adult daycare, respite care, transportation, assisted transportation. They can do health promotion, education with it, case management. They have access to assistance, counseling, information services, and supplement services. So, that's the main bulk of how the senior programs get their funding. The, the next agreement is for the nutrition services incentive program. It allows, it's a secondary contract for forty-two thousand, four oh nine, which allows us to work with the, to prepare special meals and provide the better nutrition for the seniors to cater towards that, is that program. The next one is the senior program employment agreement. This is for forty-three thousand, four oh five. This is an agreement that Terry has where he can get, some seniors are employed in the community and it helps pay the wage for those individuals to do their part-time jobs. I think the last time I spoke with him, and I'd have to get new numbers, I think we had around ten or eleven individuals that took advantage of that piece. And I'll make sure we get some updated numbers for you where we're at at that now. Then we have, that goes along with that is this statement of assurances, the certification regarding lobbying, that none of this money is used to go and lobby any individuals, and the certification regarding debarment, suspension, or other responsibility matters to show that Grant County as a vendor of the seniors program has not been debarr'd or suspended in the state of New Mexico.
Okay.
So, all of those pieces together make up the senior program and keep it going in Grand County.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging for Services to the Grand County Senior Programs, along with the agenda that was described by, sorry.
Can I second?
There's a motion, a second, to approve the agreement with the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area on Agency for Aging.
You can breathe, though.
Can you breathe during that?
Yep.
Okay. For services to the Grant County Senior Programs. Is there any discussion on the motion? I see Mr. Baldwin standing up, so I'll wait till he gets to the podium. I got a rock to show you after the meeting, too.
James Baldwin, county resident. Chairman Caston, this is a question that is perhaps obvious to you, but not obvious to me.
The new mics aren't very good, Mr. Baldwin.
Okay, well, I'm having the same trouble back there as you are here.
Yeah, the city just purchased these and we're not, we're not especially happy with them, but we're trying.
North Central. We are not in the north-central portion of the state, Chairman Caston. We are in the southern. Is there a southern portion or agency?
No, that, the North Central refers to the North Central COG. They have been tasked by the state to be the fiscal agent for the area agency on aging. And so, it's equivalent to our Southwest COG that is run by Priscilla Lucero. They're her counterpart in the north-central portion of the state. But they have been tasked by the state of New Mexico to be the fiscal agent for all senior programs in the state. That's why the agreement's come out of that COG.
Right. And the amount regarding lobbying, how much money is this going to involve?
We don't spend any money lobbying. The certification is to certify that we do not spend any of this money on lobbying efforts. That's what it is. So, no money is going towards lobbying. We certify that we do not do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Baldwin.
I have a rock to show you after the meeting.
If you're going to be around.
I'm not wearing shoes, so don't drop it.
Okay.
Okay. And yes, is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, approve or disapprove agreement number A-1321, agreement with the Southwest New Mexico Council Governments for annual membership dues and services in the amount of fifty-two hundred and fifty dollars for fiscal year 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is something we do on an annual basis is to belong to the Southwest Council of Governments. They provide different types of services for us, as it states in their agreement. They update statistical databases. They furnish technical assistance. They coordinate planning with other members. They furnish management advice assistance. They, they are the clearinghouse for projects that come through this area, have to be cleared through them by the federal government regulation. They develop, they help us in developing our infrastructure capital improvement plan if we need that. They assist us with applications, the state and federal grants, different economic development activities, housing initiatives. They work with Department of Transportation as a clearinghouse for that. They also work, help us with our Cory Caminos if we need any help on the bus systems. And they help us with the capital outlay process. This agreement is for five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. It's been that rate since I came on as county manager eight years ago. The dues have never gone up, but it seems like the services they provide have become greater and greater every time. Anthony utilizes them a lot when he goes out for his CDBG projects or Coronius projects. They do all of our public meetings for us and help us with those applications. And also, go up there and help us work with the legislators on trying to get capital outlay. Priscilla was instrumental in helping us get the two million dollars to remodel the conference center on the outside through the EDA because of her relationships that she's built over the years in that position.
Thank you. Sure. Excuse me, I'd just like to speak up for COG and Priscilla Lucero. They are tremendous. We are fortunate to have Priscilla as the director there. She is hands-on. She knows what's happening. And I don't know what we would do without her. Money's best.
She's got twenty-five years of experience now, so she's a heck of a gem for us.
Well, I tell you what, when I was chairman of the Community Development Council, I worked with every COG in the state. And by far, we have the best COG director, by far. So, I'd take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agreement number A-13-21.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve agreement A-1321. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Baldwin.
James Baldwin, county resident. As I could not hear all of the, this discussion that you were having amongst yourselves, I may be somewhat repetitive. Please bear with me. What counties are involved in this?
It is Luna, Hidalgo, Grant, and Capchar. And also, the municipalities, the municipalities, Reserve, Silver City, Baird, Santa Clara, Hurley, Deming, Columbus, Roerichburg.
And then, yeah, and then it has the-
Water Association.
The Water Association, the Ditch, yeah, the Ditch, the School Districts are in there, as well as the, and I don't know if they're around anymore. It used to be the Black Range RCME was part of it as well, but I don't know that they ever participate in anymore.
To the New Mexico Association of Counties. How much annually do we participate financially with the New Mexico Association of Counties?
You know, Mr. Baldwin, that's, that's not relevant to the, to the motion, but we'll get you that number. I don't know that we have it off the top of our head.
Discussed during the budgetary, I believe.
Do you know?
It was in the neighborhood of twelve.
I believe it's about eighteen and a half thousand dollars a year.
And how long have we been a member of this Association of Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments?
We've been it for the eight years I've been county manager. We've been a member of the association, the COG. And it was before that. So, it's greater than eight years.
We were a member when I was chairman of the Community Development Council, and that was in the, in the mid-nineties. I know we remember then, but I don't know when we joined.
So, we belong to two lobbying groups?
No. The Southwest Council of Governments is not a lobbying group.
All right. We belong to this group. We also belong to the New Mexico Association of Counties.
Yes.
These two Association of County groups. Is there a possibility of duplicity here of county, of civilian funds?
They're two totally different worlds.
Yeah, totally different work.
And New Mexico Association of Counties is, our insurance is provided, provided through the New Mexico Insurance, County's Insurance Group, which is part of New Mexico Association of Counties. So, to get insurance from the New Mexico Association of Counties, you have to be a member. And so, they provide us our workers' comp, our liability insurances. Arizona Missions Insurance is, all of our training is provided for that. The COG doesn't do those types of services.
Of this five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, will this all come from property taxes, or will some of it be grant money from state, federal?
Comes from the general fund.
From the property taxes.
Well, property tax is one of the revenues that goes into-
General fund.
General fund, the general lodger's tax.
No lodgers. Okay, that's important. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. So, we have a motion to approve the agreement with Southwest New Mexico Council Governments. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, resolutions. Approve or disapprove resolution R-1356, authorizing the Grant County to enter into agreements with the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging. The contract is listed in item L.
Yes. So, they're all the contracts you did under the consent agenda. It's just giving me the authority to sign them through this resolution.
Okay. I could do that again?
Yeah, I guess so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve number R-1356 resolution.
Can I second? There's a motion, a proper second, to approve R-1356. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item O, approve or disapprove resolution number R-1357, ratifying an agreement with the Southwest New Mexico Council Governments for annual membership dues and services for fiscal year 2014.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is similar to this first resolution. This is kind of government. We're required for you to approve the agreements to, for those services. And then, we're also, as part of those agreements, required to have you approve a resolution saying that you approved the agreement. So, that's what this is. It's just approving, it's a resolution approving that we enter into the agreement with Southwest New Mexico Council of Government.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution number R-13-57.
Second.
There's a motion to approve R-1357. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we're on to the last page. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1358, supporting the Sunzia Southwest Transmission Project to provide capacity for the area's renewable energy projects. I saw John in the audience. John, do you, did you want to say something, or you want to try out these new mics the city bought us?
City's getting hammered today.
Thank you. I, I really don't have a lot more information at this time, but I do appreciate the commission considering a support resolution. We are still optimistic that a record of decision may be reached mid-September. The military issues, according to the military, still haven't been resolved. But as many of you know, they approved of a route in 2009. They approved of two routes in 2011. And the comment period was actually over approximately a year ago. And so, we, we hope that we can come to compromise with the military. However, we do feel that if the Department of the Interior follows the NEPA process, that the record of decision would be issued. Because I think Sunzia has shown many that, that the power transmission lines do not impair the mission. And they also have a U.S. Senator who's also visited the site, and he does not feel that the line will impair the mission. So, we, we're very optimistic and we hope that they will follow the NEPA process. And this will bring much-needed transmission to this part of the state, plus the north-central part of the state, and provide for some economic opportunities for the southwestern counties as well as the north-central. So, anyway, we appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have.
I think we discussed it the last time. I was pretty satisfied.
I just want to say, you know, it's, we're blessed in the respect that we have such ample green energy available to us with the sun and the wind. We're just not blessed with the amount of people to use that much energy. And if we can't build transmission lines to get that energy to the people, then we won't ever be able to use all the, the green energy that we can produce. So, you have to have transmission lines. So, I'm definitely for this, so.
And another advantage of having additional transmission, all the transmission lines at this point, most, mostly in New Mexico, are at full capacity. And if you remember a couple of years ago, they warned of blackouts in El Paso and Los Cruces if the fires were to catch that Springerville line where they get their power from. With the Sunzia line that'd be connected to the substations, you won't have severe blackouts. The power plant that's located just north of Deming runs at about fifty percent capacity right now. And one of the reasons why is they really don't have any more capacity to push out any more than fifty percent. So, the transmission lines is needed and it not only help with the electrical grid, but it'll also boost the oil and gas industry because that particular power plant is, is natural gas-fired. And so, the oil and gas industry has also endorsed the Sunzia project because they realize that it will enhance the oil and gas industry as well.
Okay. And one other, one other thing I want to bring up is the transmission line where it currently would cross Grant County is down in the Panhandle. And just, just purely by accident, I'm sure, that that has got one of the absolute best spots in the state for wind and one of the best spots in the state for sun. So, we could have some economic development and some tax money coming in from that in the future if this line gets built. So, it's good for Grant County.
Yes. And I, and I, being a native of this area, I've always pushed for more economic development in this area. But you do have the twenty, twenty-mile Panhandle. So, you have a twenty-mile strip in, in southern Grant County that, that, that would be very eligible for renewable energy. And like you said, both wind and solar.
Yep. Thanks, John.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-1358.
Can I second?
There's a motion, a second, to approve resolution R-1358. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks for coming down, John. Approve or disapprove resolution R-1359, amending ratification of Section forty-seven point three of the bargaining unit contract for 2013-15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What this is, is when we were, during our union negotiations this year, I don't know if they were, but we had discussed this article forty-seven point three and gone back and forth. It's the uniform allowance for employees that wear the uniforms. And we were going from paying it on a monthly basis to a lump sum basis. We had put the contract in front of you saying July, we had found- We had put the contract in front of you saying July, we had found that the union had, during our discussions, we had talked about doing it in December, they had put forth December on their side. It doesn't have any effect to us whether it's July or December, as the county is still the same amount of money, still in the same tax year, because it's done on the W-two's for tax purposes. So that's what this does, is it changes it from dispersing the uniform allowance to the Sheriff's Department and other uniformed employees, detention employees, from July to December of each year, which we've dispersed it in July of this year, so this won't really take effect until next December, not this December, but next December we'll disperse it, and that's all it is, is so that we can get it straight with what the union is wishing to do.
Okay. See, can you get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-13-59.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve R-1359, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1360, a lone resolution authorizing and providing for incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its wastewater system in the North Hurley Service Area. This was the resolution that we talked about last week, and it was not on the agenda, so we couldn't approve it, so can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-1360.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve resolution R-1360, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1361, budget adjustments for fiscal year 2014. Anything else to do with adjustments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I won't go through the detailed lines, as you can see, it breaks out a lot. What these adjustments are for is that as we go through our budget process, and we discussed it during the budget process, we get some grants that come in after the due dates of our final budget, and so what we have to do is come back and do these budget adjustments. So what this is doing is this is setting up the budgets for 2014, for the senior services transportation grant, the congregate meals grant, the home delivery grant, the SEP grant, the DWI distribution grant, the DWI local grant, the Stone Garden grant that's received by the sheriff, and then the EMS funds, and the fire excise tax fund, that we get all that information from the state afterwards. So the first portion will set up the increase in revenues, which it's an adjustment of one million thirty dollars, one million thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, and then when you turn to the second page, what that's doing is taking that and breaking it out to all the different expenditures where those line items go to, for the different fire departments and the senior programs, as well as the EMS funds and the sheriff's Stone Garden grant. And so that's what that's doing, it's because of, these items do not come in until after we're required to have our final budget up, we have to do them as budget adjustments in front of the Commission.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-13-61.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve R-1361, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1362, the treasurer's fee schedule. That's kind of funny that it's under T, right, for treasurer?
Thank you, Commissioner's Chairman, and Steve can fill in where I missed on it. This is a resolution that Steve has brought to the Commissioners, the treasurer. The Commission is the only ones that has the ability to set fees, that is your authority, and so these are fees that are being charged in the treasurer's office for different types of service, returned items, delinquent personal property, he has a demand warrant processing fee of twenty-five dollars, and expenses of sale of property for manufactured homes of one fifty, manufactured home movement certificate, which is part of the ordinance that the Commissioners passed, allowing him to have that movement certificate, the original certificate of twenty-five dollars, reissuance is ten dollars, and then the purchase of his tax roll is one hundred and fifty dollars. What that does is set those fees up so he can display that in his office, similar to what the clerk does in his office when you go in, he has a list of all the different fees that have been approved by the Commission for him to charge.
Did you get the back piece too?
No, it was the back.
Steve, you want to add anything?
The only thing is, all those fees were already by resolution, we just added, because of the ordinance that was passed, the fee for the certificate.
Okay, all right, can you get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-1362.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve resolution R-1362, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1363, supporting the Southwest New Mexico Energy and Green Jobs Task Force Regional Strategic Plan for Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy and Associated Job Creation. Was Anthony going to go through that, or you?
Anthony can, I can give a brief update to the Commissioners, what I know of it, and then Anthony can fill in any blanks if there's some. This was, the Green Energy Task Force was created back when Senator Binghamman was in office, it's working with all the counties in this region, trying to find up, find ways to keep us sustainable down here in this region of the state. And so they've already taken this resolution to, and I believe everybody's already passed it except for Grant County, it's gone to Catrin County, Hidalgo County, Luna County, City of Deming, City of Bayard, City of Lordsburg, Town of Hurley, Town of Silver City, Village of Reserve, Village of Santa Clara, the Village of Verden, the Village of Columbus, in addition to memorandum of understanding provided for economic development signed by these bodies in 2011. Everybody else has passed it. One thing that we were talking about, myself and Mr. Gutierrez, that was part of the strategic plan that they've put forth that this is supporting, talks about the Office of Sustainability, and so we wanted to make sure there was some participation in that, because we've had some dealings with the Office of Sustainability locally here, that it was a grant that set it up, we used some grant funds that Grant County had, along with matching funds from Town of Silver City, and in my opinion, and this is solely my opinion, that I don't feel as Grant County was represented as strongly in that as the Town of Silver City. And I reference that because the Office of Sustainability got the Town of Silver City a solar system for the sewer, and I got some reports that said you need to change your light bulbs in your offices. So I don't feel that it was fair. So we wanted to make sure that everybody was represented as part of that group, and so Mr. Gutierrez put some language in here that's the last whereas on the front page, it says, "An oversight committee comprised of members from throughout the region will be formed to ensure that all entities are getting maximum benefit from the recommendations in the strategic plan." And so that's what we wanted to make sure, is that everybody at the table, not just Grant County, everybody at the table has fair representation, and not one group or the other is overpowering that strategic plan. And so with that language in there, and we spoke with some people, and I don't think there's any objection to it, they, I think it's a good resolution, I think the strategic plan is a good plan, Mr. Gutierrez has worked with the group since they started and been part of that, and so I think it's a very good plan for the region, and it's worthwhile supporting, we just wanted to make sure that everybody would have the same representation, and we've done that with the resolution now.
Is the other parties on board with us?
The other parties have approved, and we've heard discussions, and Anthony can play, is, in discussions we had talking about this change, it's, that's how everybody feels as well, that they want equal representation. I haven't seen their resolutions to see if they added that in there as well, but that was from the discussions we had, it was, everybody wanted that, equal representation. Luna County and all of them, they discussed it during their meetings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-1363.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve resolution R-1363, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item V, approve or disapprove resolution number R-1364, authorizing the county to enter into a cooperative agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation to install concrete low-water crossings with footings and drainage improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What this is, is the Commission approved the cooperative agreements earlier in the year for the local government road funds. Mr. Moore has some monies that were left, so he talked to the state, and they're letting him go ahead and submit this one to do this low-water crossing. It will be drainage improvements across Mahogany Drive, beginning of pavement, starting three hundred feet from Rosedale Road and Mahogany Drive intersection, East 325 to end of pavement, and installing one hundred feet of forty-eight-inch culvert inserts with concrete headwalls and drainage improvements of Little Walnut Road, beginning of pavement one mile south of Round Mountain Road, twenty-five feet to end of pavement, install riprap baskets with the concrete splash guards and low-water crossing on Anderson Road, beginning of pavement starting point one mile from State Road, four sixty-four west, two hundred feet to end of pavement. So this, he's going ahead and diverting that money to do those projects, it's for seventy-two thousand one hundred and one dollars, with seventy-five percent coming from the state, which is fifty-four thousand seventy-six, and the county's match, which can be monetary or in-kind, is eighteen thousand and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Can you get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-13-64.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution R-1364, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item W, approve or disapprove resolution number R-1365, the chief deputy salaries? John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The previous Commission, previous to all of you being on here, approved a resolution to increase the elected official salaries to the statutory cap at that time. When they did that, there was nothing done with the chief deputy salaries. In the past, they've always been a percentage of the elected officials, and their salaries have been listed on that resolution. So when the elected officials received their raise about two and a half years ago, the chief deputies did not receive anything at that time, as well as the other employees did. During our union negotiations this year, we've negotiated raises for our employees, which they have not received for about four years, so this will be their first year, and so we bring in front of you the resolution to look at the chief deputy salaries, because they are not considered regular employees, so as the regular employees get raises, the chief deputies are not included in that. Everything that happens to them has to be done by resolution, just like an elected official. How long has it been since they've had a raise? Um, I think we did the last one in 2006, is the resolution I used to make this one. So it's been a while for the chief deputies. This, what this resolution does is this will take it to, not to exceed ninety percent of the salaries for the elected officials, which would make it to where the chief deputy assessor, the chief deputy clerk, the chief deputy treasurer would be at fifty-one, five, thirty-six, and the undersheriff would go to fifty-three, seven, twenty-nine. The undersheriff is higher, because by statute, the sheriff is paid more than the other elected officials, and so when you do it by a percentage, his salary comes up higher than the other chief deputies.
And we did budget for it, right?
It is budgeted, we have budgeted, it's in the approved budget, the budget, the budget has been approved by Department of Finance Administration, so our budget is final.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-1365.
Can I second? There's a motion to approve resolution R-1365, is there any discussion on the motion? Steve, would you have his hand up for?
Hey.
Go ahead, Steve.
My understanding is that the preliminary budget was approved with a ninety-five percent of, and, in the past, forever, it has always been at ninety-five percent of the elected officials' salaries, so, you know, just as a suggestion to look at the position and treat the position with the responsibility and respect that, and the requirements of the position, I believe it's only fair to continue what has always been the, you know, tradition of the county, to keep those salaries at the ninety-five percent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I forgot to say, these will become, if it's approved by the Commission, they'll become effective September first, because we cannot back fund that's considered anti-donation at the state of New Mexico, and so that will be the start of the next payroll will be September first. And then just also some information on Steve's comment is, traditionally in the past, yes, the Commissioners have been at ninety-five percent of the elected official, but until two and a half years ago, when the Commission did the raise for the electeds, the electeds had never been at the cap, so this was the first time they were taken to the cap, so it was a larger jump on the elected side on the first time there was given raises. And so these raises are, were set at ninety percent just because of what I've heard talking with Commissioners.
What's the average percentage rate?
Um, it's there, let's see, I guess there's nothing. They make... It's approximately an eight and a half percent raise.
Substantial?
Yeah, that's not exact, because I don't know the exact wage of them, but they're around forty-seven-five, so this will be an eight, eight and a half percent increase.
Yes, Steve.
Also, at the time that the elected officials were raised to the cap, there had been, the cap had been raised by the legislature, however, the governor vetoed that, and in this past legislature, the cap has also been raised, so the elected officials are not at the cap at this point in time, and so, you know, and that did pass, and the governor did approve it, so just, for the discussion?
No, I just feel comfortable with this, I think that that type of raise is, you know, we're just coming out of a recession, very difficult times, and I think it's responsible for this body here to be responsible with the taxpayers' money, and I think that ninety percent is very responsible. It's, I think it's fair also to the chief deputies.
All right, I had always kind of promoted the ninety-five, but I'm comfortable with ninety, I think that's, I think that's what we're going to do, so at this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, I'd like a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
I move.
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Called to order, the Grant County Indian Health Care, Health Plan Claims Board, they changed that name on me. Didn't? That used to be Health Care Claims Board, didn't it?
Oh, no. Randy's just messing with you, Randy's just messing with you, he's only got a little minute. He's trying to mess with you.
That's okay, I got a little time to mess with him. Okay, approve or disapprove July 2013 Health Plan Claims?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your package you have the claims, the claims that are for the sole community provider are sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight claims, totaling five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars and eighty cents, claims that are the out-of-county claims, which are indigent, are fifteen claims for twenty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, totaling sixteen-hundred-and-forty-three claims for five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve July 2013 Health Plan Claims for indigent fund.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the Health Plan Claims, any discussion on that motion? I did have a chance yesterday morning to have a conversation with Senator Morales, and I was a little at the hospital alone, he really feels comfortable that we're going to get that two million back, we all hope so, I know, so he's, he's going to, we're going to be relentless, and he's going to be relentless also on that in this next session, so cross your fingers, and see if we can go get it back, so at that time, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove indigent burial certificate dated July 23, 2013, to Tarazza's Funeral Chapel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As part of the indigent funds, we can pay up to a maximum of six hundred dollars. Actually, by statute, it's a little higher, but as Grant County's ordinance, it's six hundred dollars in the resolution. So this is a claim that has been put forth by Tarazza's Funeral Chapel, is for an indigent burial of six hundred dollars, and some of these burials, they are done in the Paupers Cemetery, and some are pre-made, just depends on how much room.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the indigent burial...
Nice second. There's a motion and a second to approve the indigent burial certificate dated July 23, 2013. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, 75 say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Going to get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Healthcare, Health Plan Claims Board.
Say aye.
All those in favor, 75 say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We call back to order the Board of County Commissioners to most stand for county reports. And today, I'd like to start with our sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just want to report, there's been a rumor going around about somebody going around selling books, trying to solicit information regarding children. We still have not been able to verify if it's an actual thing or if it's a hoax. There's been different stories going around, different organizations getting involved, different opinions. All I can advise the public is just to be cautious, be extra observant. If they do see somebody, verify, I mean, don't give information about your kids. And just if they're concerned, call us, and we'll go check on it. Like I say, right now, there's nothing concrete saying that it's an actual thing that has happened, but I would just caution the public just to be aware and observant. In regards to the work that my staff has been doing, we've been actually solving a lot of our burglaries. We've got people that have been arrested on stuff. We're recovering a lot of stolen property. So, you know, I commend the staff for what they're doing. They've been doing a really good job following up on leads and cases, and I, you know, I can't stress that enough. You know, I'm proud of the people that work for me. They've been doing really well, and I hope to continue doing that. I'm shorthanded one person in civil process, and they've been extremely busy. I'm going to give you a stat report on them. For the month of July, this is July, we served over 600 papers to, that come from the courts that we are responsible for serving. And this includes notices, subpoenas, summons, and writs. We are also responsible for transports to prisons, picking up and bringing back. They've done over 6,000 miles in the month of July. I know for August, we're close to that already, and we're not even done yet. We've got a couple of days left. But they've been extremely busy, so I commend them for the work that they do. You know, the court keepers pretty busy, and they do a lot of, a lot of work. And, you know, you know, hearing that the raises are coming up, you know, they deserve it. You know, they've been doing a lot of good work, and, you know, I'd just like to thank them for what they do. In regards to the chief deputies, I believe, I can only speak for mine, because he works for me, and I see what he does. But I know that I can rely on him anytime I'm gone, and I know that business will get done while I'm gone. You know, I'm not gone that much, but when I am, I know that I leave in good hands with my under sheriff. He takes care of business. So I'd like to, maybe, I know right now, we're in a tough time. We're really getting out of certain things. But historically, it always has been 95%. And I'd like to maybe, here in the near future, move them up to that. You know, they deserve that. And hopefully, you know, sometime soon, we can do that. You know, but I do appreciate what you did for them today. You know, it at least helps them, gives them a little bit of motivation, encouragement. You know, I can say that Kevin works hard, and he deserves what we can do for him. But all the staff, all Grant County employees have done, from what I see, have done good work, and they deserve to be recognized and paid fairly, and be treated the same as everybody else. So, you know, that's all I have to say, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for sheriff today?
I'd just like to see, Sheriff, if you can check with other Class B counties, and see if they're at 95% or if you can do that for me also, Sheriff Treasurer. I would really like to see that.
You know, and we just had our Sheriff's Association Conference in Las Cruces, and then talking to other sheriffs historically, and other counties that actually the under sheriffs, chief deputies for them make more than the elected official. We're the only county that is under, the chief deputies are making less than the elected official. So that is through other counties, you know, by, by, only the elected official is, state statute only, set. The under sheriffs and other chief deputies are not set, their salaries are not set.
Be the chief deputy in those positions. The sheriff wants to swap as soon as possible.
Okay. So in those, in those positions, when they're paying more than the elected official, because I know Burnaleo County, let's say, the treasurer, the assessor, all those, all those people are paid way more. But I think that there's certain credentialing that they have to have to get that job, too, that go along with that.
That is correct. And the reason why I think that is, is the elected official by state statute only has to be here eight hours a month. The chief deputy and under sheriffs have to be here all 40 hours a week and that. But I can say, in our Grant County, in being elected for the last four years, I can say that I've honestly been here more than I've, that I'm required to, and it's because I care, and I see the same with the other elected officials. They're always here. You know, there's no question about when they're not here, and stuff like that. We will continue to do that as long as we're here, so.
Yeah, and I just like to say, it was a different set of elected officials when I came in, and I had the same view. And I met with them, and I asked them that I felt the chief deputy should be paid more because of the requirements around them, and they all said no. So that's why our chief deputies are not paid more. But I had the same view with them, because there are different requirements. We do have a great set of elected officials that are in here almost, some are in here 40-plus hours a week. And so they take this as a serious job and do good work doing it. But I had asked that question, because they can, if they choose to not be here all the time, and the chief deputy can't, and they all told me no at that time. And it was a totally different group of elected officials. But I had asked when I first came in, because I saw that there was more requirements to the chief deputies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, my vote today was not because I thought that the chief deputies in this county are not doing a great job. As you know, I understand particularly the law enforcement end of it. I know the type of work that you do. And you're chief deputy, and I have worked hand-in-hand. In fact, he makes a pretty good wine-o. When I was working undercover, I had him sitting down in front of a grocery store, acting like a wine-o, watching a buy. So we worked arm-in-arm. And if anyone could have given him a 95%, I would have done it. But I also have a responsibility to the taxpayers, and I hope you understand that. This is nothing personal against Steve, your chiefs, or any of the chiefs in the different departments. I appreciate what you do. It's a thankless job that you do, that you do, and I think you do one heck of a job. So I just understand. My position is that we just watched the hospital go through a similar thing, and what kind of group would we be if, in fact, we don't look at it with constraints also? It wouldn't be setting a very good example. So it's not because, not because of the hospital, it's just the situation this community's in. And we can look around the county, I mean, around the state, and you can see other counties who are maxed out as far as grants and stuff, and they can't go anywhere. They're frozen. Grant County isn't. And we want to maintain that responsibility to the taxpayers, and to ourselves, because we're taxpayers, too. So nothing against you, your chief deputy Steve, or sheriff, none whatsoever.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner. Like I said earlier, I, you know, it's, I appreciate for what you guys did today, and I'm sure they will, you know, but historically, it always has been, and hopefully in the future, we can get them there. I'm not asking for it now, I just, I feel, I'm thankful for what you did, you know, they will appreciate it.
Anything else, Sheriff?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Steve, you have a question? Okay. I thought John was asking. No, I don't have a question. Well, as far as the treasurer's affiliate, in the majority of the cases, they are also, the chief deputy is paid more than the elected official, but...
Class B counties. We don't want most of the counties, we want Class B counties.
I'll ask Renee to do, to survey the HR, so we can get them.
Okay. We have thus far issued two of the movement certificates. We decided that we would not, we would issue those as courtesy certificates, because we hadn't had the resolution for the fee passed as of yet. So we had two more inquiries about the process, so this is moving forward, and this is one of the projects that we've been working on for about four years. And finally, it's, we're getting to the point where we're going to have a consistent system, at least right now within our local area, but all up and down I-25, all the counties are either on board now or coming in the next couple of months. So that's, it's been a good, a good process, and I'm glad that we're finally to that point. The other thing that I, that I have to report is, last week, I attended a meeting of the treasurer's affiliates legislative group. We met with Property Tax Division, and the major, they were wanting to discuss with us the resolutions that the treasurer's affiliate presented to the NMAC Board, and they were concerned about it. After the meeting, they kind of relaxed a little bit and said, well, we're going to try to respond to the issue by changing our rules. So we're not, we're optimistic, but we're cautiously optimistic, because we think it's still going to require that it be moved forward to legislative action, just from past experience. So we're going to figure that out. But the major thing that was on the agenda, and the major reason that I attended, is that there was a suggestion that Property Tax Division receive the 1% reassessment fee that our assessors are getting now. And they were, what they were trying to do is the person, the amount that is realized from the centrally assessed properties, they wanted to keep that, not go to the counties. So luckily, in some discussions that we had prior to the actual meeting being done, we were able to kind of nip it in the bud, and they, so far, as a result, I said, we're trying to work with them as an affiliate to get the issues resolved, and pending their response, and hopefully this will all go away. So in our county, it's not particularly a very big issue. I mean, every penny we lose is an issue, but it's, it would have amounted to last fiscal year, approximately $12,000 for our county, that would have gone to Property Tax Division. And, but there's other counties that over 60% of their properties are centrally assessed, that would really devastate them. So, you know, luckily, we were able to get that off the table before the meeting, so, but it's, they say they're still coming back with it, so.
Keep informed on that, so we can, so we can stay informed when we're in Santa Fe. Okay? Anything else, Steve? Okay. Thank you. Eric, you take over for Mary today?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to introduce myself. I'm the new chief deputy assessor. I was appointed by Mary. I'm filling in for Mary today, because her mom's been very ill. So, and I just wanted to let you know that Misty attended the IAA course, and she passed, and she's just lacking one more class to become a New Mexico certified appraiser.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I see some gray hairs already, though.
Yeah.
They start coming right away.
Came out five years ago. Should have tried to work with John.
Those were when you were the chief deputy clerk's office.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Chairman, Commissioners. I really don't have much of a report today. I just did want to clarify a little bit on the same-sex marriage licenses that are being put out there. As a county clerk, I feel that it would be in our best interest as a county to wait a little while to see what the courts determine on these, because there's, in the past, there was a clerk up in Sanibel County that they'd issue out, issue out some licenses, and those were deemed invalid. So I don't really want to give a false sense of hope at times, you know, what we could be doing by issuing out those licenses. I do want to, you know, let the public know that there is one county in New Mexico that is issuing licenses on their own accord, and that is Dona Anna County. Two other counties have been court ordered to issue out marriage licenses. So those two larger counties are Santa Fe and Burnaleo. Those were not counties that were, that took it upon themselves to issue out those licenses. Those counties were actually ordered by a judge to issue out licenses. And a district court judge, that is correct. So if that comes to Grant County, where someone pursues that in district court, I will follow court orders and do what I need to do on that end. But until then, I would respectfully like to wait to see what the courts have to say on this issue before Grant County does anything of that nature. And to any couples that are out there of same sex that would like to perhaps get a marriage license, I would respectfully ask them to, if they do not want to wait for Grant County, they can drive two hours, and Dona Anna County would issue out without any issue. Mr. Ellens, the clerk there, was an attorney in his former life, so he feels that he has the knowledge to interpret law, I assume, and he's taken upon himself to issue out those marriage licenses. But at this time, I can't interpret law like that, like he does. I don't want to, really. I'd just rather wait for the courts to tell us what we need to do on that end.
Thank you very much. And just to answer one of the questions that came up today, you know, the commission has no supervisory authority at all over another elected official. So we could pass all the resolutions till we're blue in the face, and you can still take that stand. So there's no reason for all of us to get in a brouhaha over this. We just, you've got to do what you've got to do, and we don't have the authority to make you do it, so.
Chairman, if, if the majority of the counties were doing this, then of course, that would be something that we could look at. But again, like I said, of the three counties that are issuing licenses, two were court ordered. They were made to do so. So it isn't like the majority of the counties are, are doing it, or aren't, or, you know, most of them aren't doing it, the majority aren't doing it. Two of them have been court ordered to do so. So it isn't anything that, across the state, that I'm, you know, I'm not doing anything different than any other county clerk is doing at the time.
So these, these people should be contacting the district judge?
I would think so. If it's that important, they want, maybe that Abby has something to add on that, but...
I was going to say, I think what we have now is just the court decisions, right?
Uh-huh.
I think what we're kind of all waiting is for the appeal, so that we have some written law to follow. Rob is to kind of keep talking with me about this. We can, we can...
I'm not a big yellow...
I'm just going to say, we just have the district court decisions now. I think what Rob and many of the other counties are waiting for is for the appeal, is that we'll have a written opinion, so we'll have law that says, clerks, you have to do this. Because right now, they're a little scared that those licenses may be invalidated if they go ahead and issue them. It looks like, kind of looks like it's going where we all think it's going, but there's still a little risk there.
There's a little risk there, and that's why I'm holding off.
I was just saying that, you know, Rob and I can continue to look at it, and maybe he'll change his mind. I don't know.
But nonetheless, I mean, our office is all for whatever the law provides us to do or asks us to do. So with that being said, we are already preparing for the situation if it should happen to But nonetheless I mean our office is all for whatever the the law provides us to do or asks us to do. So with that being said we are already preparing for the situation if it should happen to where we have to or will at some point issue out marriage license because there are some changes that need to be made in our office in order to do so on the certificates themselves and on the applications that one signs on so we've already you know we're taking steps in that direction because that's what it looks like you know anytime the bigger counties are told to do something that's kind of how usually how things follow suit with those larger counties so we're we're just kind of being prepared but you know I don't really I'm not comfortable at this time you know like I said the two counties that of the two of the three counties those are court ordered that they made them do it it wasn't a situation where you know it was a majority who were all gonna do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony you're in the back did you have anything today?
No.
You know that you know he does.
Thank you Mr. Chairman I'll make it brief. I did get an update on the Fair Barns this morning apparently the electrician has already put all the piping in they should be receiving the all the fixtures today and install them tomorrow and they're gonna have an inspection for the interior of the building on Thursday so that portion will be done. They hopefully have the box the stainless steel box that was required by the inspector by next week and hopefully by next week they'll get the power in and everything will be complete except for the drainage fixtures. I spoke with John the current contractor gave us an estimate of what it would take to put in the drainage fixtures that we've been thinking about and.
Drainage.
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 Drainage. And it was recommended by the contractor and I think it's probably right along with that is to wait till after the fair is completed and we'll go in and put those things in. And I will be attending a meeting on September the 10th for a colonius workshop. We were allocated about 336,000 I think for for planning and so we're gonna attend the workshop in September moving right along with North Hurley. I think we're nearing the end of hopefully near closing by the time ordinance comes into effect and so hopefully going to construction hopefully by the end of October. And I would like to mention the ICIP. I did send an email out to each of the Commissioners for a request Commissioner Caston has already put his request for the five top priorities.
He gets all the stuff.
I would like to I would like to point out though if anybody really looks at the ICIP we do have 26 projects on the ICIP and although maybe the special election didn't turn out like we we thought it might I would if I may Mr. Chairman make a short comment on on my perspective of of what the what needs to happen at the end of this ICIP and these are just infrastructure projects that the county feels are necessary to continue business as usual or do some improvements to our current infrastructure. We've got roads we've got buildings we have historic buildings we have economic development projects we have water and wastewater projects all inside this ICIP list of projects. At the end of that list of projects we have a total of $46 million for project costs. None of these projects have anything to do with quality of life. There are no recreation centers in here. I know Commissioner Hall has been in conversation with a group of individuals from the Fifth Gila area that are really pushing to have a recreation center because they don't have anywhere for their youth to go or for the rest of the residents to go for that matter. The same sentiment when we go out for CDBG projects and we go to these public meetings they have the same sentiment. Yeah my road got fixed this year but we know what we need some more things for our seniors center we need some new pool tables we need some new computers we need a lot of things we need a lot of things that are all capital investment projects and although maybe maybe this capital outlay tax maybe it wasn't successful for for whatever reason and the voters said you know well I don't really like the way it's structured or for whatever reason but I hope that that these residents of Grant County don't don't close the book on on being able to invest in their own community. I I visited with planners from Durango and from Taos and from Santa Fe and from Bisbee, Arizona a lot of small towns like we have that are extremely successful they've all told me the same thing we we had to stop depending on state and federal funds and start investing in our own community. With all these projects right here right now the only funded portion of it is 469,000 and that comes from most of it comes from match monies. Match monies come from the general fund. Our general fund you spoke about wages earlier which talked about every year we talked about how many grants can we go and try and get well that's all totally dependent on how much match monies are available because we can't we can go out for 12 different grants that might equal $10 million but fact is if we only have 200,000 to do for match monies well then we can't access those monies. So people may not fully understand what the county can and can't do. I heard so many conversations on well there's a lot more need we need other things besides you know a movie theater or a swimming pool or you know and maybe that's maybe that's true but if the county can free up the monies that they currently use for capital investment maybe those some of those monies can can be made for those things. So I think that there was a huge push for as far as putting the the projects and that tax it was a huge push by the community to put that thing down and say you know what no we don't want new taxes we don't want these things. I don't think that they realize you know that a quarter of 1% is for every hundred dollars you spend you only spend a quarter on trying to improve your committee community you know so I don't think that people really understood that. And so I I hope that the community itself can be as diligent in trying to pursue something that will work and something that will improve our community as hard as they try to try and put this thing back down. I was extremely disappointed I am I can't go to Walmart without somebody saying oh you're the county planner when are you guys going to do this when is the county going to provide this when are they gonna we can't provide those things it's it's fact the state can't provide those things any longer. Now our CDBG projects which used to be one of the most reliable funds that we had to provide provide those projects went from $12,000 or $12 million to $8 million this last year. Those monies just aren't available. If this county is gonna turn itself around become more economically viable be more competitive in what we do and and how our quality of life is you see in all the magazines on all the articles when they describe Silver City and they describe our quality of life sure if you're retired it's a wonderful quality of life if you're a bird watcher or if you want to go out to the Gila River and and do those type of things that's a great quality of life but you go ask all go out there and ask all the teenagers and all of our college students what their quality of life is here there's a whole different perspective out there. Anyway thank you thank you Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mr. Gutierrez I appreciate what you just said I really do because our quality of life for our young and and our kids it's just it's just tough and you know then we have groups that want to shut down our a third of our roads then we have groups that don't want us to do anything with our water infrastructure I mean it's just getting ridiculous. You know the the point that I really liked that you made was that 25 cents for every hundred 10 and a half of those 25 cents were gonna come from people that don't even live here. $4 million of $10 million was gonna come out of people that don't even live here in Grant County and that's why I was so disappointed and that's why I was so so into trying to push this issue because when I saw that that much money was coming in from the outside that's why I really pushed it. So I thank you for bringing up these issues.
John? I guess as you know Randy has deserted the front of the helm there and gone to the back to work as our accounts payable clerk. Glad to keep Randy with us glad to fill that position after we lost Eric going over to the Chief Deputy's position. I think Randy's gonna do a really good job he's actually stepped up and in helping in both positions right now and done a really good job talking with Eric Eric said he called on real quick and he's processing the AP already by himself doing a great job there so I'm glad that we were able to get Randy in that position and keep him in our offices. We went out for to fill Randy's position I believe we've received 22 applicants and so HR has looked at him this afternoon I'm gonna sit down with with Renee and Abby and Linda and we'll go over those and start scheduling interviews so we can get somebody out front so Randy can do only 15 jobs instead of 30 in our office because he's having to do double duty right now and everybody does more than just one job it seems like in the county we're all do more than one not just in my office in all the offices. Everybody's doing more than just one person's job and and I'm grateful for that. I wanted to correct myself when we were talking about the increases for the Chief Deputies the numbers I gave you all were right and everything but what I did when I added the percentages I took the undersheriff's wage and added it into a regular chief deputy to get the percentage the actual percentage is a 13% average yes not an eight and a half.
I thought it was over 10 but I wasn't sure.
Yeah that was my fault because the sheriff like I said statutorily makes more than the others his wage is higher than the others so I used his base pay into the new base pay of a regular chief deputy and so it was my error and so that is none of the numbers have changed or anything it's just what that average is wanted to let you know that. As you see we're getting closer on the front I know everybody's wanting it done citizens and employees and everybody alike I think it's gonna be really nice they're they're down to this morning girls men were filling in the the handicap ramp backfilling that so that they can get ready to pour the cap on top of that to have that handicap ramp set up and ready as well as the platform is ready so we'll lay the wire in there we'll get it built up to where it needs to be and lay our heater wire in there and then they'll come back in and pour off those two slabs and pour the last retaining wall of the planters the planter front wall on the side of the building and so then we'll just go ahead and repair that asphalt in front of there and that front will be done and back open so we're looking forward to that and and those are funds that we had to do with out of the general fund because we don't get legislative appropriation for these type of things. As for our appropriation we received the 300,000 that was received for the sheriff's vault we're still waiting agreements like everybody else is in the state I talked to the town of Silver City they haven't seen any of their agreements we can't start until the agreements are given to us and so it's just a waiting game. We might hopefully we get an agreement and we can do something before the next legislature because usually what they do when you come into legislative sessions they ask you have you started your project and if you say no they try and take your money away. Well the reason why I haven't started the project is because they haven't given us agreement to start the project their husband would have started the project and so it's a catch 22 that you fight against every year. I also dropped off all the information for the colonias funding that Anthony talked about they've required us now it's a new thing that I have to take our audit and our budget and put them electronically on a jump drive as well as the resolution of the Commission approving the audit and the application for the colonias. When all those things are public documents on the state auditor's website and through DFA I have to get them off of those websites and put them onto a jump drive and deliver them up to New Mexico Finance Authority so that they have them without having to go out to the websites and get them. So we've done that and so hopefully we will now get our money sometime soon they were due by October 1st they already have them in their hands so I'm assuming sometime after October 1st we'll get our agreements so we can start the colonias project which is planning in North Hurley for drainage and improvement. And those are the main things that are happening with us we're just starting to gear up for legislative session and it's coming faster than we think committees are starting to meet and issues are starting to arise and so we are starting to talk with people and get that going as well as we've been meeting with the General Services Secretary of General Services the Cabinet Secretary on Fort Beard trying to find out what they're doing currently what they are doing is they've issued an RFI which is a request for information to see if anybody out there is interested in buying the current the Fort Beard property the old Fort Beard property as it currently sits without the hospital torn down. If they do not get any takers on that RFI then they will issue an RP to see how much it'll cost to tear down the old Fort Beard Medical Center to see if the $4 million that was allocated in legislative is enough. So that's where they're at Fort Beard with that $4 million that was put through the budget through Representative Martinez this year so other than that just business as usual.
Yes.
I mentioned that I have a report just that I met with the board formerly known as Southwest RTD that's now our advisory board for Corey Caminos and talked with them about what they wanted to do as far as the Southwest RTD status and then what they can be to Grant County and all the entities involved in our transit authority and I think what they'd like to do is go ahead and join a joint powers agreement and continue as an advisory board for Corey Caminos and then if you know we do expand you know local transit maybe railcar those kinds of things we'll still have it's possible we'll still have I don't know I'm hopeful we'll still have Southwest RTD can just sit out there they won't be acting as Southwest RTD on as our advisory board it'll be a different board made up of the same members but we'll still have that out there so they'll still have that option if they want to get back together and perhaps go out for gross receipts tax that's that's the advantage of having the the separate entity the district so it'll still be sitting out there and right now I don't see any reason why we can't just why the entities can't just leave it out there it just it just won't be active but what we'll have is a different board that's just an advisory board not a policymaking board and so their issues that they work on will come before the Commissioners which is sort of what's happening now we just haven't really gotten to that next step so I'm going to assist them on behalf of the county because we need to move forward and and know what's what their status is and you know what their authority is and what ours is and so I'll help them go ahead and get that going.
Yes and I'm glad that you did what you did I know there was a lot of confusion of where do we really stand and there's a lot of questions at every meeting almost every meeting there was a question of what is our role and what do we think our role should be so we we talk a lot about what we thought our role should be so I appreciate you taking the step forward and meeting with the group and that we could figure out what exactly we need to do on the transit.
A JPA that I think Robert Scavron put it together I'm not totally sure that was put together in 2007 but for some reason I the entities didn't sign it except for Silver City so I have something to start with already so it shouldn't be a major issue but it'll probably take a few months to get it all back to all the entities or get it back to the board get it back to the entities for approval and then get it going but in the meantime we're just functioning you know under that assumption.
I just wanted to it doesn't have anything to do with that I just wanted to bring up that I heard because it's a local individual is Sam Ovina who's been with DFA for years I think he's two years away from retirement has left DFA and he's gone over to PERA so it's sad to see him leave DFA because he was our last link that knew history because everybody else has left under the from the past administrations it's all new people now and he has left I found out when I was in Santa Fe he's going over to PERA so we're gonna lose him but I wish him luck in his new job so if anybody knows him you can congratulate him on his new job he is from this area has family down here still and so he's done a great job and done a lot for all the counties throughout the state and municipalities all the residents he's been a very good advocate for all the small towns up there and like you said we hate to lose him because he was he was our last link into DFA and and now we're dealing with only new people that don't know a lot about what has happened in the past so.
Thank you. First of all I'd like to first start off by asking our manager John what whatever happened when the request was made on the light on Highway 180 over by the shortstop I mean there was another accident last week there and it could have been fatal I mean it was a it was a pretty bad accident luckily nobody got killed but there's there's been people that have died there already and I don't think we want to lose another life to to a bad intersection.
Yeah my understanding of that and we'll get some more information on it again but my recollection of when that was is they didn't do the of when that was, is they didn't do the light up there, because the plan was to have, when they did the one eighty corridor redo it, which the money ran out as they hit the end of Silver City, with all the traffic lights here. Um, the, the idea was is they were going to have access roads that would come down, and that would outlet down lower in the valley and get off of that blind hill. And that's why they weren't going to do that. Then the monies have run out. Um, so we'll get newer updates, because we do have a new director in this area, and we do have a new district engineer, Mr. Doolittle, and so we'll get some update.
I would be for writing a letter, uh, condemned by the commission, please do in that.
Let's do that, and, uh, you know, if we have to go out and look for some grants, some safety grants out there, let's do what we can.
Well, we can't put it without the state's permission, because it's a state highway, and that's my understanding, is they don't want to put one up there because of the blind hill, they want to put it down in the valley. But we'll get some information, and we'll proceed.
Let's do that, because it's.
The people don't come out down in the valley. That didn't make sense.
Right. Well, they were going to the corridor, forces you to go down there, I guess makes an access road.
Even if they shut that down and, and make everyone use Morales Road, that's such a safer intersection.
But yet they put a light there, Walmart, which is on the crest of the hill.
Yeah. You know, I also wanted to request, uh, for next meeting, to, to, uh, start the eco-management team for the vegetation and, and thinning and watershed protection.
We'll put together something for you to approve as the commissioner will be the representative.
I thought it was going to be on this, on this, uh, meeting, but I know we had a long meeting, so that's fine. Um, I want to welcome our new, uh, chief deputy, Eric, congratulations. Randy, congratulations with your new job, we're going to miss you. You've done a heck of a job for us, and we, we really do appreciate you. Very organized, and, uh, you know, you are human, made a couple of mistakes, but nothing major, we appreciate that. Thanks again. Um, county clerk, Robert, I mean, we appreciate what you've done for us on this last election. Your group really worked hard. I know it's easier to have a one-day election versus a mail-out, mail-outs are pretty crazy, and, uh, you know, you all did a very, very good job. Um, we did have a SWACA meeting yesterday, and I think we're making some progress with the Forest Service. They, they did agree to meet with us on the road issues, and got a letter about a month ago, and we're going to set some dates up, so we're going to start off meeting with Catherine County first, and see where we go with the, with the roads. I think we've, we've made some, some, uh, progress. They were supposed to make this decision a year ago, and, and we've delayed it about a year so far, so hopefully we can continue to work hard and, and finally come up with some kind of solution and, and agreement with the Forest Service on what roads do need to be closed, because, you know, these roads and these access to the forest are some of the only quality of life, uh, advantages that we do have here in this area, and we, we want to keep these roads open, not only for, for our young, but our adults and, and people that are disabled, and, and people that want to utilize the forest. We already have one point two million acres of, of pristine wilderness out there, so if people want to get away from the roads, they can do that. One point two million acres to get away and, and hike, that's beautiful. I've done it plenty of times when I guide hunters. It's gorgeous out there. But let's, let's keep the access to, for our people, and, and, and that way they can continue to enjoy the, the, uh, the land of many uses. Not single use, but many use.
I'd like to add, Commissioner Ramos, as our representative on the board, and I believe you're still chairman of that board. If possibly another county can pick up some of the duties that Randy was doing, put in the minutes together, and that because of him transitioning and us trying to transition a new person, then it's going to be really tough for us to.
Well, we're hoping he's going to be our secretary, so I don't know. But no, we'll definitely talk about that.
If you want, if you want the group to shut down, I'm all for you, and we'll take care of that, but, but no, all the work that's been done, I, I just don't want us to jeopardize everything that you've done in that group, and so I think it'd be best if, if one of the other counties or municipalities involved, or counties, I guess, no municipalities involved, but one of the other counties can take over some of that, so that we can get somebody new in and trained up, and, and, because they're going to have a lot of responsibilities, and Randy himself has taken on a lot with the AP, and trying to do both, and it would really help us out.
Well, that brings me to the, to the, my last discussion here, and that's the, the sale of all our old cars, um, see if we can get something going. I know that I got a call from a gentleman here in, in Beard wanting to buy one of the old Impalas, one that didn't even have rims on it. But unfortunately, we can't act on it unless we put it up for bid, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, what we're doing is, we've had a problem, because the options that happen in this area just haven't been as popular, you know, they, I guess, haven't been as often as they used to be, and so it's a long haul to take equipment, some of the equipment doesn't run, some does. Uh, and so we talked about it, and I'm going to talk with Jacob tomorrow some more, we talked about it last week, is we're going to go out and get a fair market value, what we feel is fair market on our vehicles, and then put them out for a bid process. What it is, is it's kind of a reverse bid. You bid how much you're willing to pay for it, and what we do is set a minimum, and people submit seal bids on the equipment, and then we open them and bring them in front of the commission, and the highest bidder is who wins that piece of equipment. So that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, I know we've had some old cars sitting there for a long time, and when they sit like that, all they do is rot, so I think it's best to start it and get it done.
And some people will buy them. There's a gentleman currently that's buying scrap pieces of mining equipment, old mining equipment, to cut them up for scrap, because they're worth more as scrap than they are running.
Where is Hidalgo County on the youth detention system?
They are going to put in this year for some monies to get it started. Um, last year, we did not qualify for any of the monies, because all the juvenile detention monies went to the east side of the state. And talking to Senator Morales, he's going to really push to get monies for the west side of the state. And, uh, I believe he has the backing of the area senators, and, uh, hopefully we can get that done. I believe four point two million was appropriated for the east side, and we're going to try and get the same on this side. So, uh, we're going to have to continue to, to talk with Mr. Morales and, and have him push the issue for us.
Now, is Catherine County still talking about us housing their prisoners?
Yes, sir, they sure are, and they're, they really want us to do that. They really feel that if they can get their adults to our facility, that'd be good for them, and their juveniles to the Hidalgo facility, that'd be, that'd be a great, uh, for them.
Do we need to make a formal offer?
No, what they'll do is, they're working with Mike, they've been talking with Mike and Joseph, and then what we do is we just come up with an agreement. And so I'll talk with Mike. Um, it's what we have with others, is you just have a contract that says we'll charge so much a day, and then they'll be able to start shipping them down to us. As well as Hidalgo, when they go to a full juvenile, we've told them that we'll accept their inmates, their adult monies.
One for one, maybe?
Um, no, they actually have more adults than we have juveniles, so we'll probably make more money housing their adults than they will money housing our juveniles.
And I'm glad you brought that subject up, because that is a big subject for, for our SWACA group, and that we want to continue working together on the area, or the Southwest problems, uh, because we've got a lot of multiple problems that, that we all share, yes, sir, that we all share, and we need to work through them together.
On fields?
Yes, sir. You know, we also did have, we had the forest over at, at our meeting yesterday, and, you know, they, they were really happy to really sit down and talk to us. They, uh, they stated that, you know, they, they tried their best to do their, the best job that they can, they go and get an education to, to, uh, to represent the forest and ag or, or in some type of management throughout. And they, ninety percent of the time, they can't do it, because they've got some kind of organization fighting them on it. And, uh, we did agree through our SWACA group to support them if, if, uh, if they needed support, because we, we, as a group, are tired of them making decisions on all the opposition that they're, or, or making the decisions from all the opposition that they're getting on, on every issue, and, uh, and stopping progress. So we're going to, we pledged to work together with them, and hopefully they can continue to work together with us. Okay? That's it.
All right. Commissioner?
Yes. Anthony, I likewise would like to thank you for your comments. I think it's important for our citizens to understand where we are, where we stand, and what we need to accomplish, uh, the things that we need to make this community where we're living in. It's important that our youth stay here, and particularly our young adults to stay here to raise their families. But if there's nothing here for them, just for, just some people, then they're not going to stay, and we're going to continue to lose, you know, valuable people in our community. Uh, I wanted to say, I heard what John said, John talking about our employees, the elected officials, the employees, how they take on so many different tasks, and Anthony's a good example. Uh, you, if he starts, John starts telling you all what he's responsible for, you think, that guy ought to make two hundred thousand dollars? And he doesn't.
So does he.
So does he. But I, I, I just want to thank the employees. I know it's a thankless job many times. Uh, I don't get confronted near as much as you guys do. When I go to Walmart, you're standing in line, and they're arguing with you, the, the GRT, and you're thinking, and the wife's pulling your arm, and he's pulling your arm, you're thinking, what, what do I do? I can't explain it to her, ask her to come to the office? He says, no, forget it, I've already made up my mind. Uh, and you could tell he didn't have the facts. You read in the paper about people who want to do certain things, go on rocks and stuff. The facts are totally different, are wrong, and I know that person, I know a person well, she should know the facts. It's been discussed with her. Um, Eric, congratulations. Uh, I think they put a good person in a good spot. I think it's going to work out well. Randy, good luck. Good luck. I've, uh, Randy had to take me under his arm when I first took office, and I appreciate all the help you gave me, and it was a lot. He was giving me stuff whenever, I really didn't need it, and he knew it, and he said, well, it'd keep him happy. And so I appreciate that. But just all the employees. I've been spending a lot of my time working on two projects. One has been dear to my heart for many, many years, and that's detox, or taking care of the problems we have with our alcohol and our drug problem. And folks, this impacts us tremendously, not only the sheriff, that you can read in the blotters about how many shopliftings going on, the problem we're having downtown Silver City and stuff. We have to address it. It doesn't go away. We have to do something about it. And just arrest someone doesn't just do it. Just put someone in jail doesn't do it. We have to be a progressive community and have something in place. And I'm challenging the different entities and the different organizations in this community to come together on the community of care that we've been working on for quite a few years now. But I think it's starting to come together to where we need not, we need the prevention element. We need counseling, we need detox, both medical and social. We need aftercare, and then long care. Wants an addict, always an addict, wants an alcoholic, always an alcoholic, you're going to have to stay with it for the rest of your life. We need to put that together as a community. And I applaud the different entities that we're talking to, you know, the hospital, the Fort Beard, uh, the county, the city, uh, the state of New Mexico, but we all have to put in something. The state, as the chair said, no longer are we going to be able to see just the state or the feds. Our grants is going to cost us money too, in any kind. We don't have the money. We have to come together as a community, as a state, and as a country to address this. And we put a lot of work into it. Uh, I just hope she was just receiving an award, and all the work that she's done, and she's been a pressure of it for many, many years, and so we appreciate her. The other thing I'm working on is, there's a community west of us, Cliff, Gila area, and Riverside and the whole area. A great community, just like the other parts of the county, uh, they're great, they, you know, they contribute to the county as welfare. I'm trying to put together, they are wanting some kind of recreation, something for not only the children, but the adults, the teenagers, give them something to do. Uh, if you've ever spent a night or two out there, or spent any time, you got the river, you got a great school, and you do a great job, but they need more. And so we're working together that. John has been a great help. Anthony's on board, of course, he needs to be, because we know him, they know him, there's Tony out there, he lives there, and so we're going to be working close together, huh?
I thought he was the merit cliff.
Oh, he is.
The merit cliff.
When he started talking to me, I was talking to him out there, he kept talking about Tony. I said, who's Tony? John, he says, oh, that's Anthony. So, uh, but we got a lot of work to do, we've got it all set together, had another meeting out there last night, and, uh, we've got some want lists and stuff, and, uh, Tony, AKA Anthony, and I am going to get together today, I hope, and discuss it further, so we can get together some prices, and then put it on the ICIP, and we're going to compete for two of those slots, Chair, okay? Other than that, I just want to thank the work that the chair and, um, the town of Silver City and the university, Dr. Shepherd did, and trying to promote, uh, the GRT. The people have spoken, so as elected officials, then we have to go another direction. But I hope that maybe we can do a better job next time, maybe we can do things different, I don't know what it is yet, but I'm sure we'll get our heads together and figure it out, so that we can try to move this community. When I say community, I mean, with the county, move it forward, so we can make this a better place to live for our youth, our young adults, and seniors. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not last but least, huh? Always the other way around, yeah. Well, you know, I, I got the opportunity to speak to a lot of people in the last couple of months, and, uh, some of it was fun, and some of it not so much fun, but just the same, uh, you know, you took the job, and I didn't mind going and, and talking to them. Um, at every forum, there was a different group of people, and I can, I can tell you, I've identified at least, at least six, and there might be another one I haven't thought of yet, groups of people that were really against this, and for different reasons, completely different reasons. Um, there was a group out there that, that didn't think the process was transparent enough, or just didn't like the process whatsoever, or, um, didn't, just didn't like the project. And then there was another group of people that, uh, claimed that the tax was, uh, uh, too much, and it was a very regressive tax on the poor. Uh, then there was a group of people that just, you know, don't like any taxes, and then there was a group of people that were out there that said, I have mine, I'm not going to pay for your recreation or anything, I'm good with what I got. Um, then there was another group of people that just didn't trust the county to do what they said they were going to do, and that, that went all the way back to probably when this building was being built. Um, and then there was a, another totally different group of people that said, I don't see anything in my area, so why would I vote for it? So I see a lot of work to do to get those six groups of people put together, uh, to ever assess whether or not we would be able to do this again. And I don't, I don't know that this is possible, but I'm not afraid of taking on the task to try to get these group, these groups together, and see if we can put something that all of them can find palatable. So, uh, some of that may be parts of your projects, I don't know. So, uh, that's going to be my task for the next six months or a year, to see if, see